Okay, we'll call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, August 19th, 2013. Would you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as the City Council meets in regular session, we ask for direction and guidance as we make the decisions before us. As always, we are ever mindful of the many Batavians who are serving our community and our nation in many ways, and specifically tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community and from throughout the United States of America who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. We just ask for a special blessing to be showered upon each and every one of them. Tonight, the City Council is ever mindful that this is the beginning of the new school year, and we just ask that our school community be blessed with a successful and learning productive year, and that the future leaders of our community are educated and enlightened as to the many challenges that lay before them in the world ahead. Tonight, we ask for direction to the City Council, and we just are ever mindful that we are thankful for all the many good deeds and kindnesses of volunteer efforts and community service thousands of times over the last many years that have been showered on Batavia to make it the good and great place that it is. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman, Vasiliyan, you want to lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to note that I had it in my head that I was going to ask Alderman Vasiliyan tonight to do that because he's been kind enough to share with us his events in his family this past week where his daughter graduated from the United States Navy Basic Training, and we certainly wish her the very best in the years ahead, and I know you're a very proud father, but it was evident when you had her down here that night, but certainly in the Facebook communications that you showed around the community, there was a lot of pride and appreciation in your face. It was very obvious, so I thought it was appropriate that we ask you to do the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
Thank you very much.
Okay, ask the clerk to please call the roll. Brown?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Atack?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sparks?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Homan?
Here.
Sam?
Here.
Vasiliyan?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Motion, or the roll call shows that all fourteen members of the City Council are present in account for this evening's meeting, so we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman.
Sparks.
Sparks, I'm having a brain moment there. Would you, do you have anything?
I don't have anything, Your Honor.
Okay. Okay, then moving to item number five. Alderman Sparks is Chairman of the Governmental Services Committee. Would you present this, please?
Consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file: A) The Joint Committee of the Home Minutes for June 25th, 2013; B) The Public Utility Minutes for February 19th, 2013; C) The Government Service Minutes for March 11th, 2013; D) The Building Report for July 2013. The approvals are: A) The August 16th, 2013 Payroll in Amount of $709,871.69; B) The August 16th, 2011 Accounts Payable Check Register in Amount of $3,340,815.54; C) The City Council Minutes for July 15th, 2013; D) Resolution 13-100-R granting acceptance of stormwater easement for 1243 North Kirk Road; E) Resolution 13-99-R authorizing execution of the Memorandum of Understanding between Department of Energy and the City of Batavia regarding drainage improvements and future maintenance responsibilities; F) Resolution 13-103-R accepting deed to a parcel on Red Bud Lane; G) Resolution 13-104-R accepting deed to a parcel on Parkview Drive; H) Approval Peapod Half Marathon Class G Liquor License; I) Approval for a Block Party Class G Liquor License for Al Cosanova for September 1st, 2013; J) Approval Block Party Class G Liquor License for Pal Joey's for September 1st, 2013; K) Approval for Batavia Artists Association Class F, a non-for-profit liquor license at Water Street Studio fundraisers on September 7th, 2013; L) Approval waived fees for Batavia Artists Association Class F liquor license at Water Street Studios;
Homan?
M) Ordinance 13-34 annexation of part of Batavia Park District lands and adjacent Fox River.
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vasiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
A move we accept and place on file.
McFadden?
Aye.
The agenda is read.
Brown? Second.
Aye.
Moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of the consent agenda Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf? presented.
Aye.
I do want to call your attention, I, we had a situation developed today where we had Okay, motions approved. Fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. one more vendor show up and wanted to have a liquor license for the block party, and Moving then to item number six, matters from the public of items not on the agenda. Do we have any this evening? Okay, moving to item number seven, which is Main Street Presentation. that's the Wilson Street Tavern on East Wilson Street tells us that he wants to come down Mr. Matter, would you give us your name and address for the clerk for the record, please? and be part of this party over here because he's got some new sandwich that he'd like
Yeah, Jeff Matter.
to introduce and share with the community.
I live at 807 Main Street in Batavia, and I am a current Main Street Board Member.
Can we put him on the agenda, or is it too late?
So, tonight, we've had lots of things happening at Main Street.
Too late.
Okay, I did, I told him I would bring it up just to get your sense of what we should
This is our busy time of the year.
do, but, you know, I told him if nothing else, he could come down and give, serve
So, we have fifty-six Main Street volunteers donated one hundred and ninety-four hours for planning, meetings, programs, and event, events in July.
a sandwich, but not serve any alcohol with it, but that would be the alternative, just so you know. Okay, anybody have any other corrections, notations on the agenda?
Let's see, Chang Lee's Taekwondo has moved to Island Avenue, and a windmill sculptor
Okay, motion by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman O'Brien.
shop has moved into the Gammon Corner. Pretty cool.
The clerk call the roll.
If you haven't stopped in, I mean, Windmill Shop in Batavia, I think that's great.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Unfortunately, Burger King on Batavia Avenue has closed, so we're excited to see maybe what goes in there next. Some Main Street successes. The Artisan Collective picked up new vendors and new attendees who came to shop last Thursday. Word is definitely spreading to come to this monthly retail event. The next Artisan Collective will be held on Thursday, September 19th, from 6:30 to 9:30 p.m. at the Albright Theater, 100 North Island Avenue. Looking ahead, September is, like I said, the busiest month for Main Street, starting with the annual block party on Sunday, September 1st, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m., held on River Street and the Batavia River Walk. This is a throwback to the fifties, complete with your favorite two-dollar tastings, live music, and performances, a classic car show, twist and hula hoop competitions, a pie throwing booth with some local celebrities, and we have some present here. Thank you, Alderman Wolf, Sam, and Callahan for volunteering. I'm sure the public would love to come on out and throw some pies. And then we also are going to have a pie bake-off. So, if you think you've got the best pie in Batavia, we want you to enter this contest. So, call the Main Street office and get your pie entered. It's going to be a lot of fun. Then, we are also hosting a Batavia Broker Tour on Tuesday, September 10th, at 3:00 p.m. All brokers are welcome to attend this tour of Batavia properties. Last year, we educated brokers on city programs and incentives. This year, included on the tour is a look at properties that have taken advantage of the programs to show firsthand what our public-private partnerships can accomplish. On Saturday and Sunday, September 21st and 22nd, save some time to come out to the Art in Your Eye Festival with over seventy artists, vendors, an indoor exhibit, waterline writers reading, kids' activities, and Water Street Studios Triat tent. This festival has something for the whole family to enjoy. Last up is the Seventh Annual House Walk to be held on Sunday, September 29th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. This walk includes five homes and a tee at Water Street Studios. New this year is an historic downtown building, as well as a fine arts and artisan market at the tee. Tickets are $20 pre-sale and $25 the day of, if available. But we couldn't put on such great events if we didn't have such great volunteers. If you're interested in getting involved in any of these great projects, please contact Main Street at (630) 761-3528. Tonight, the business of the month is the Albright Theater Company. Located just upstairs above City Hall, this group has been putting on theater shows for forty years, and that is something just remarkable to me, to have someone and be so passionate still after forty years, so I think it's something to be celebrated. And let's have Jennifer Ring, Board President, come on up and talk about what they've got planned.
Hello.
Welcome.
My name is Jennifer Ring, and you guys are probably getting a little sick of seeing me, but just so you know, work is going on upstairs, and we're really, really happy to see it. I haven't been up there yet today to see what progress was made, but I have been stopping by just about every day, and there's drywall. It's really exciting. The reason I was here today is because we're going to have our fortieth anniversary, and I'm here to invite all of the City Council members and people from the city to a gala that we're going to have on September 7th. It's a Saturday night. It is the second show of Harvey, which is the first show of our season. We're going to have some appetizers, and we're going to have a little bit of history of the Albright, some live music, hopefully, showing, a performance of Harvey, and then we're going to have a little champagne toast and some cake while people mingle with the cast, and some of our original members are hopefully coming this evening to help us celebrate our fortieth. So, that was sort of my purpose of being here, and hoping you guys will come and see and visit us, and I have little cards with all the dates and stuff if you would like one.
Thank you. Could you maybe, as long as we got you here in front of the TV cameras, could you, if somebody wanted information about Albright or order tickets, could you give them a phone number or an email address?
Yep. We are on the web at AlbrightTheater.com. That's theater spelled R-E, and there's ticket information there. You can buy season tickets online from our website, or you can reserve individual tickets by calling our box office at (630) 406-8838. And the gala is open to everybody, but we're kind of, you know, special invitations to you guys that have helped us out and helped us grow and continue going for so long.
Any questions for the council? Well, thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to item number eight, which is going to be recognition of the Bulldog Bridge Bulldog Artist. Mr. McGrath, are you going to lead this one, please?
Um, as you know, and I think it was actually Alderman Sparks who made the recommendation that while we were waiting for the final sculptures to be, happen on the bridge, that we get a couple more of the Bulldogs up there. So, we went through the local artist group, and we found two of our own residents who are accomplished artists, and they are responsible for the Bulldogs that are up around the bridge now. And what's very interesting to me is that it shows how, you know, the creative arts are starting to really express themselves, so to speak, in the community. Neither of these gentlemen are associated with Water Street Studios. They come into art by various, various means, so I just want to introduce them to you. I'm going to introduce Tim Furness. Tim Furness is a Batavia resident. He's Vice Principal at Kishawaki Educational Consortium, and he's married to Joanne Furness, who's the Director of Victim Services, who does our service for our Police Department out of the AID Association in Aurora. Tim painted the Bulldog that is, it's reminiscent of our quarries, and it's the dog that looks like limestone, and that's Tim right here. Thank you, Tim. And then, this is Ezra Segal, and Ezra Segal painted the other Bulldog, which is a Bulldog with other animals on it. Ezra told me when we first talked about this that he, this was very, very meaningful to him because I believe his mother painted one of the first Bulldog, or first cows?
Cows. Well, not the first, but the first.
In the, in the first Cows on Parade in the City of Chicago. His mother is an artist and painted one of those, so this is kind of, things coming around full circle. Ezra is an artist for a living, and he's lived in Italy, Lisbon, Toronto, and then is back here in Batavia and to the Chicago area to pursue his career. So, he's shown a lot in New York, one-man shows, and internationally as well. So, I just thought it would be nice to put some people together with, with their Bulldogs, and then maybe just ask them to say, I don't know what their, what their muse was, or what they thought about as they did it, but most importantly, I wanted to have us show our appreciation for them, so, thank you.
When I did a Bulldog, I realized very often I didn't walk up to the Bulldogs that were around the town. I'd see them more for, from a distance. Sometimes I'd walk up, but, so my intentions at least were to, for the Bulldog to work from a distance, and hopefully it might suggest other things like a Dalmatian, or a cow, or other things other than a Bulldog. And then also, when you do get up close, there's detail that you can look, you know, both on top and under, and it's positioned right now on both of them on the bridge is wonderful. You can really see both of them from afar and also get close to them, so I'll be sad when they get relocated.
Well, I'm not really sure what my muse was, except maybe a bad burrito, but I had this idea, and actually I'd like to thank Garen Sparks for remembering that I'd actually talked to him a couple of years ago when the first Bulldogs on Parade had happened, and I said, I said, you know, I always thought that I could make one that would look like it sort of walked out of the limestone quarries, since the limestone is part of the history of Batavia, and I forgot that I told him that, and then when Bill had contacted me to do the dog, and I came over to look at it, and at the time, I think on my ride over here, it was kind of like, gee, I should make it look like stone. And then he, when I went upstairs, and he says, oh, I, Garen tells me you're going to make it look like stone, and I was just like, what? You know, when would, when did that happen? And, but I do, you know, I'd like to thank him for remembering that I talked about doing one, and it was a lot of fun, and I hope that, of course, a lot of people think it looks like wood, so I don't know what happened, but you know, it's, but it's supposed to be stone, but I guess if you look at it and you like it, that's what's important. But I do appreciate the opportunity, and it was a lot of fun. Thanks.
Thank you. On behalf of the community, I just want to say that I've gotten nothing but rave reviews about the two dogs and what they're representing, and the artwork that went into them, and I thank you for your creativity and your exposure to broadening our mind and appreciation for art, because that's what Batavia, I think, one of our goals in the near future is to really drive home the artist activity that we have taking place in Batavia, and I think those two dogs sitting on the bridge, along with the two pieces of art that are hopefully soon going to be there in another week or so, I think really will say, make quite a statement for art right in the center, heart of Batavia, so thank you for your contributions in doing that. Okay. Okay, next, we're going to move to Chief Dyke. If you want to come up and introduce item number nine, which is the oath of office for the appointment of a paid-on-call firefighter, Todd Lewis, and I would so make that appointment and ask for a motion of confirmation.
So move. Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Wolf. Clerk call the roll, please. Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vasiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Chief Dyke?
The new paid-on-call, his name is Todd Lewis. He lives in Geneva. He's a firefighter, too, and a paramedic. Todd, could you come forward?
Todd, you want to join me up here in the center of the aisle here for a moment while we do the oath of office? You raise your right hand and repeat after me. Hi, Todd Lewis.
Hi, Todd Lewis.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the position of paid-on-call firefighter.
The position of paid-on-call firefighter.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
For the best of my ability.
For the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Captain Moore.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'm out here in front now, so let me stay here for a moment. And the next one is item ten, which is the appointment of new ESDA volunteers. Chief Dyke, are you going to handle this?
Yep. We have two new volunteers for the, for ESDA, Aaron Schneider and Andrew DeVincent. They both live in Batavia. Could you come forward?
I guess I'd ask for a motion of confirmation for these.
So move.
Second. Motion by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Stark. Clerk call the roll. Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vasiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, gentlemen, if you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, and state your name. Aaron Schneider, Andrew DeVincent. Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the position of volunteer.
Position of volunteer.
With the Emergency Services and Disaster Agency in the City of Batavia.
Emergency Services and Disaster Agency of Batavia.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Counties of Kane and DuPage.
For soundly swear.
Soundly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of volunteer.
Position of volunteer.
With the Emergency Services and Disaster Agency.
Emergency Services and Disaster Agency.
For the best of my ability.
For the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Captain Moore.
Thank you.
Moving then to item number eleven, which is ordinance thirteen dash thirty-three corner setback variance for the covered porch at 595 Carriage Drive. Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution was brought to the CDC after it went through the Zoning Board of Appeals. It was discussed at the CDC, and essentially what it is, is a variance to allow the front porch to extend out into the setback, allow per ordinance, and in essence, what this does is it sticks out about a foot further than the existing roof structure itself. There was a lot of discussion at the city, at the, at the CDC, and at the Zoning Board of Appeals. They did go through the findings of facts. I have to commend the Zoning Board of Appeals because I feel as though they did a really good job of evaluating the findings of facts, but per law, they couldn't find positives to the findings of facts, although they did note that they really hoped that CDC and the City Council would pass this as they thought that it would be appropriate. CDC did think it was appropriate, so we are passing it on to City Council for approval, and with that, I move for approval of ordinance thirteen dash thirty-three.
Second. Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Homan for the approval of ordinance thirteen dash thirty-three. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll. Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vasiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. You're welcome. Thank you for your contributions to improving Batavia. I appreciate that very much.
We applaud.
Moving to item number twelve, which is Resolution thirteen dash one oh five dash R, excuse me, a resolution authorizing the submittal of a grant application for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program Funds for the Batavia Avenue Streetscape Project. Alderman Wolf, do you have this one?
I've got it.
Are you got it, Alderman Brown?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. This again was discussed at the CDC meeting. Essentially, again, what this does is it authorizes staff to put in the application for this ITIP grant. As the mayor mentioned, ITIP stands for Illinois Enhancement Transportation Program. In the past, we have been recipients of two other grants for this, one on Wilson Street, and the other one was on the bridge for the Streetscape Projects, and the, the way this state has done things now is you can no longer apply for a grant just for Streetscape. It has to be part of a federally, I think it's called the Federal Aid Highway Program. It has to be a part of that. So, staff has evaluated that to see whether or not Batavia Avenue would be appropriate for that grant application. What they worked on doing was breaking the project and, I guess you could say, half, or a little bit less than half, in order to make the grant where it would be applicable towards that project. So, we're hopeful that we receive this grant. If we do receive it, we're not bound by a certain, I think we have to use it within three years, but we don't have to use it within a certain timeframe prior than those three years, and it needs to be applied for by, I think, tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken. So, this is the reason why it's on the City Council tonight, and it passed CDC with positive recommendations, so I move for approval of Resolution thirteen dash one oh five dash R, authorizing the submittal of grant application of the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program Funds for the Batavia Avenue Streetscape Project. Supporting Batavia Avenue Corridor Enhancement Project.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of Resolution thirteen dash one oh five dash R for the submittal of the grant application with the Illinois Department of Transportation Enhancement Program Funds for the Batavia Avenue Streetscape Project. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll. Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vasiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
or a little bit less than half, in order to make the grant where it would be applicable towards that project. So we're hopeful that we receive this grant. If we do receive it, we're not bound by a certain, I think we have to use it within three years, but we don't have to use it within a certain timeframe prior than those three years. And it needs to be applied for by, I think, tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken. So this is the reason why it's on the city council tonight, and it passed CDC with positive recommendations, so I move for approval of resolution thirteen dash one oh five dash R, authorizing the submittal of grant application of the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program funds for the Batavia Avenue Streetscape project, supporting Batavia Avenue Corridor Enhancement Project.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Wolf, for the approval of resolution thirteen dash one oh five dash R, for the submittal of the grant application with the Illinois Department of Transportation Enhancement Program funds for the Batavia Avenue Streetscape project. Any discussion?
Kirk Hallerall?
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vassillion.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Resolution thirteen dash one oh five dash R is approved, fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Moving then to item number thirteen, which is approval of option for Baptist church with request for qualifications and authorization for requests for qualifications issuance. Alderman Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. There was a public open house held at the Baptist church property on Tuesday, July thirtieth. This was an opportunity for not only the city council members, but anyone from the public that was interested to attend, to educate themselves into the condition of the church itself, the different additions that have been put onto it over the years, and have some conversation and thoughts on what we should be doing with this piece of project. You may remember this project, or this property was bought a few years back in order to assist in the straightening out of the S-curve there, which at one time we thought we were going to be able to do. Because of many different reasons, with IDOT, we can't do it. It mostly pertains to the slopes and the grades and, and the kind of design that they require to have happen. So that project has been scrapped, and we now have a piece of property that we hope to see developed and revitalized, and it's about, that property itself, I think, is about half that block. And then the city owns the parking garage and some other portions of that block also. So the, the open house was held so that we could get input from the public on what they thought we should do. Should we spend money on refurbishing it? Should we bring it up to code? Should we rent it out? Should we sell it? Should we just maintain it? Should we tear it down? What should we do? And so we took in all those inputs from the public that was there that cared to share their, their ideas, and then we brought it back, staff put together a recommendation. Actually, Gary Holmes put together a list of maybe eight different possibilities, options that we could consider. So we, we looked at that, and we talked about it at the joint committee meeting, and it was decided that we were going to pass it on to city council with the recommendation to go with option eight, which it elects to retain all structures and perform no temporary or permanent repairs or restoration work. Property is marketed to potential purchasers who would have the option to maintain or demolish the entire facility. So that was the option that we wanted to pass on to city council for approval, but we also wanted it noted, as the mayor said, that we wanted it to go out for an RFQ immediately and get this property, get some action on this property, whatever kind of action it is. We needed to see what the market would bear and, and what we could work with on, with other developers and maybe come up with a private partner, private-public partnership, or just see what there is out there. So we'd like to get it back on the tax roll. We'd like to see some further development on the property, so that's what this is all about. It's, it's authorizing staff to go with option number eight, where no major repairs would be made to the existing structures, and staff is directed to issue an RFQ to potential developers with the understanding that developers will be given the option to maintain or demolish the existing structure. So I so move.
Second. Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman O'Brien, for the approval of the motion for the council for the RFQs for the Baptist church. Any discussion?
Kirk Hallerall?
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vassillion.
Stay.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, no, no's, one abstention. Okay, moving to item fourteen, the administrator's report. Mr. McGrath.
Thanks, Mayor. If you saw the proposed calendars that we distributed to you tonight, if you could take a look at those, and maybe we'll have a discussion about them tomorrow night, we, the staff has tried to bring together most of the important topics we have to deal with between now and the end of the year, and tried to spread them out so they can get adequate time. Tomorrow night, we wanted to also discuss the possibility of setting aside a few special J-Cow meetings for especially big projects such as the Walgreens. Chris Aiston, our new economic development consultant, began work today. I met with him and Jason Bager. Tomorrow, he's going to start taking tours with various staff members of the downtown. We like the idea of somebody coming in and getting a fresh look at the town, but we're also interested in him comparing the different viewpoints of different staff people, so he'll be taking these tours with individual staff members and with the mayor, make sure that what he's hearing, that we're all on the same page. He's already started working on some general ideas for marketing. He's started to work with Howard Jason today. We have a service that allows us to have access to rental rates in, in the city and in the surrounding areas. He's going to work with Howard so that that is hooked up with our GIS, so that a potential broker, developer, user can go into our website and use our GIS mapping to get into that kind of data, so it makes it much more accessible. Chris told me he also plans to do door-to-door visits, regular door-to-door visits with our businesses all over town. It'll certainly take a long time, but he feels it's very important to strike up a personal relationship with some of those, the business owners, property owners, and also allow him to do some informal surveying. He's been in touch with two developers regarding the Baptist church and a few other vacancies we have in town. He has contacts with developers who are interested in different size projects, and as you know, we have everything you could imagine, from small empty lots to large empty parcels, to potentially the Baptist church project and some other vacancies in the downtown. So we're very excited about that. We've begun negotiations with Comcast for a new franchise agreement, and as I noted in an email, I think the most important part about that is trying to ensure that the Comcast continues to support BATV. I mentioned this tonight, you know, on television, so that the community knows that both our consultant and the Comcast team have acknowledged that BATV, for a public access channel, is one of the best in this entire area, certainly for a town of our size. And there are many, many communities that are just doing the electronic bulletin board, much less not only showing all of the public meetings, but creating other shows, showing as much live sports and taped sports as they do. So it's very important to us to try and negotiate that into the franchise. And that's all I have this evening.
Any questions to the city administrators this evening? Alderman Clark?
Do we have anticipated substantial completion for the Wilson Street? I just got an email because school's starting and things are still, they're just, I.
Well, I think substantial completion is in November, but that's, I think, the sidewalks and streets.
So the road will be back to like drivable, I mean, I know it's not the roads we're doing right now, but.
Yes, they'll be doing, they should be doing sidewalks in the next two or three weeks is what my information is.
Okay.
So substantial completion of the entire project. I'll try and get more specific information for you.
Okay.
Any questions?
Where do we stand on Walgreens? Any progress in negotiations or anything?
We are, our, as we were at the last meeting, our consultant is waiting for some financial and some other information from the developers so he can finish our report. So Gary Holmes sent them, sent BEI a letter outlining what we think are some reasonable ways to handle the storm waters, so I think they're, they're going to be looking at that and taking that to Walgreens, and that's, that's basically where we're at, at the moment.
Other questions?
Thank you. I guess what I'm going to do is we're going to contact them because of this, because of our scheduling, we're going to start getting the budget and strategic planning and, and try and talk with you about setting up some specific meetings because we need to see some kind of end here, so, so I'll report back.
Other questions?
Okay, moving then to committee reports, community development. Alderman Brown?
Just some meetings to announce tonight, Your Honor. Tomorrow night, August twentieth, at seven thirty, will be the joint committee meeting. Couple items that CDC has on there will be the Houston street design process. Another one is the comprehensive plan update, which we've been going through for quite some time. And then Streetscape is another item that'll be on probably every, every joint committee meeting agenda for quite some time, whether it be future Streetscapes or updates on the Streetscapes that are happening. And then historic preservation is scheduled to meet August twenty-sixth at five thirty, and then August twenty-seventh, the next joint committee meeting. We've got a couple items on, on that agenda again, which is the Houston street construction process once more, and there'll be some discussion about the construction management at risk versus hard bid, situations like that. And plant commission is scheduled for August twenty-first, this coming Wednesday night at seven thirty. I don't think that's been canceled, Scott? There's a couple items on that agenda. That's all I have.
Very good. Public utilities, Alderman Clark?
Yeah, we have one item on the agenda tomorrow night for the joint committee in the hall. It's a memorandum of understanding with Burme Lab for transmission lines maintenance, so that's the only thing. It doesn't even look like, right now, there's anything on the twenty-seventh agenda as far as public utilities goes, so, thank you.
Okay, city services, Alderman Wolf?
I don't have anything on tomorrow night's J-Cow meeting or on the twenty-seventh.
Government services, Alderman Sparks?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tomorrow night, the twenty-third, the strategic planning, service delivering, financial sustainability. There's also the Wilson Kirk sale, and nobody mentioned that. I don't know who's got that. And on August twenty-seventh, there's the J-Cow three-month review, and also strategic planning element for Tentatively. Thank you.
All right, moving to item sixteen, other business. Anybody on the council, anything you want to bring up? Alderman.
You know, go back to my report. I just got an email from Jason Bager, couldn't be here tonight, and he said that he had just, he had heard late this afternoon from our consultants that they've received the information from Walgreens, from the developer for the Walgreens project, so we'll be calling them tomorrow to get a definite date when we get our, our report. So I just wanted people to, you know, know that.
Anybody on the council, any, Alderman Wolf?
Two things. Just want to make sure that everybody gets an invite to the corn boil this Friday night, the twenty-third, out at the high school, kick off the fall sports season at the high school. I believe it starts at five and goes, I think, until seven thirty or eight, all the teams out there. Also, BATV announcing that we will be going HD on our stream this year for football, starting on the thirtieth, Friday the thirtieth, so if you can't get to the game, you can watch it in high-definition stream online at myBATV.com.
Okay, anybody else? Anybody in the audience? Okay, I've got a couple of things under seventeen, the mayor's report, that I want to cover. First is all of you, I believe, got maybe an email from us, and it certainly has been in the newspapers. Within the last several weeks, the Batavia Police Department conducted a liquor compliance exercise with thirty-four license holders in the city of Batavia to ensure that proper identification and laws were being filed as it applied to the sale and service of underage individuals in the city, who are attempting to buy liquor in the city of Batavia. Unfortunately, as all of you now know, of the thirty-four licensees that we currently have in the city of Batavia that either sell packaged or sell in restaurant situations or in a VFW-type situation, of the, of the thirty-four that we have, thirteen, which was an unbelievable number for me, failed the test. And the way this was run, just so everybody's aware, the Batavia Police Department, in cooperation with some other police agencies in the area, we kind of trade young people between cities so that we don't have necessarily Batavia people, young people going in and buying liquor within our community, and we supply some to other towns and they supply some to us in a kind of an inter-agency agreement between police agencies. The ones that we had come into Batavia, I've seen their pictures, and I would tell you that my opinion is they were, they were clearly appeared to be under the age of twenty-one. Now, when we had this happen before, and I'm sure there are those in the community who feel this way, again, when we do this, some people say, well, gee, this is unfair because the police department went out and found people that looked like they were, let's see, they're under twenty-one, but they look like they're older, so that you're trying to fool the liquor license holder. I will tell you, I don't buy that at all. I mean, anybody that's under twenty-one, regardless of how they look, should be checked. And so, you know, many times after you're twenty-one, my experience was I went into different bars and institutions in this town and other places, and I was always asked for my ID, so I was twenty-six or almost thirty years old, I was being carded. So, I mean, this is not any unique situation where trying to set somebody up or the police department's trying to get somebody. We're just trying to make sure that we have compliance. Now, the driver's license, the ID that each one of these people currently had was of the issued by the Illinois Secretary of the State, and Chief, what is it? It's a pink color, it's, it's a different color than a.
It says under twenty-one, ready to cross it.
Right.
Only it's a different direction.
And it's, yeah. It's vertical.
Vertical.
It's real.
It's a different, so, you know, I, I, I'm having a hard time understanding how thirteen failed to see this, if, but we, we got ourselves into this situation. So as the liquor commissioner, what my plan is, you know, we could be kind of really hoity-toity with this whole thing and, and really kind of slam down on people, but because we're trying to just, I think what we want to do is get the education out there and get the cooperation of the merchant, much more than trying to lay a penalty or a fine on somebody. So my plan is, is that we're going to, the city attorney has been working with me, and we are preparing a, a letter which we are describing as a stipulation agreement, in which we're going to ask each one of these violators to agree through signature that they've stipulate that they did violate the city ordinances, and that as a result of that, they are going to agree, and this will be done. We won't have to have big, full-blown liquor control hearings and have, you know, a bunch of folks in and testimony and court reporters and everything else, if everybody will agree to sign the stipulation orders. And what we're going to ask them to stipulate is, I am going to assess them a small fine that they will be asked to pay, and that'll be in the stipulation agreement. I am going to ask that each one of their people that was involved in this situation submit themselves to be retrained and reeducated by classes that are taught by members of the Batavia Police Department as to how to properly identify and react to and challenge people who are trying to get around the system, and, and I think this has been very beneficial training, and we are very fortunate that we have within our, Chief, we've used the detective division to do this training, don't you? We have some folks in our detective division who are quite schooled and, and I think quite well-prepared to do this, so we are going to ask that they, that they do that. And then the third thing that they're going to be told is, is that because this happened and because they have paid the fine and they are going through the stipulate, they're going to stipulate that they are going to go through the training, that we are going to revisit them, and they're going to be retested, and, you know, kind of just like we were before. And hopefully, all thirteen of them will pass the second time around, but they are going to be re-challenged in the near term, once we get all this accomplished. I hope to get the letters out by this week to L-13, and the city attorney's office has been working with me on that, and that's what's going to go on there. Now, does anybody in the council have any questions or comments you'd like to make about this? Alderman Chantet?
I was going to say, having worked in the industry when I was in college, it is unlikely that any of these kids would take the Basset training. They're, they're probably not with the companies anymore. Probably, I like, it'll be great training for the other people that still work there.
Yeah, well, if they have new people, we're going to ask that anybody that's there that's not subjected to Basset training, or if they failed in their, this most recent experience, that they be here, be down here to be retrained. Alderman Clark?
How many total did we visit and, how many passed? Let's talk, let's talk about the kids.
There's thirty-four in total.
So you went to all thirty-four?
Yes, and thirteen failed, so twenty-one passed, thirteen failed.
I didn't know if you did all of them.
No, we did them all.
Your Honor.
Took several nights. It did not all happen.
Were any of the thirteen repeat offenders? I don't remember what the last list was.
I don't think they were. I think it was mostly newer people. Now, the way this works, so you all know, we, before we sent the kids into the establishment to do whatever they were going to do, we sent one of our officers into the establishment, kind of in an undercover situation, or somebody from another agency. So we had a police officer standing there or sitting there witnessing what was going on here, so we weren't just letting these kids go in there by.
I don't have a problem with the process. I just wanted to know if.
No, I just wanted to explain that. I, I forgot to do that as far, Chief, am I forgetting anything that we did here that I haven't told them?
Well, in answer to your question, it approved that one, one was a repeat offender.
Okay.
It should have been taken into consideration.
Right.
Frankly, that's levied. I, I will say that for the most part, and I heard from a lot of the owners after this, and they were quite embarrassed, and frankly, had taken administrative action against their employees, in some case dismissal. So they are taken very seriously. The disturbing, the disturbing part, other than the sheer number, with almost thirty percent in violation, the disturbing part is probably ninety percent of the people that did serve a minor actually asked for a driver's license, held it in their hand, and obviously didn't even pay attention. So it's just kind of a routine that they're not really looking at, but they're looking at what they should be looking for, so education is important, isn't it?
And I think that's the scary part to me, is the, I appreciate the chief's comment because that was the other thing that the detectives shared with me in my briefing with them after they, they completed this, was the number of people who physically looked at that license and couldn't either see the color or read the notation across the top of it, and I'm not twenty-one. You know, there, we need to send a message here, and we need to get it loud and clear to these people that, you know, this is not something that we are taking lightly. I mean, I've, unfortunately, in my years here, I've seen several tragic accidents in this town involving young people who got inebriated and went out and got themselves killed in car accidents. So this is not something that we take lightly here, and those are real dark and dreary days when we have something like that happen. As long as we're talking about the police department, I'd like to continue on and just publicly commend the members of the Batavia Police Department for their recent activity in the past week. As you, again, I think we're all advised or read in the newspaper, we were subject last week to a string of residential burglaries where we physically had individuals that were going around the community at nighttime during the late-night hours and were, Chief, you want to, I don't want to take this, you want to tell us a little bit about what these gentlemen were doing? in the past week. As you, again, I think we're all advised or read in the newspaper, we were subject last week to a string of residential burglaries, where we physically had individuals that were going around the community at nighttime during the late-night hours, and were, Chief, you want to, I don't want to take this, you want to tell us a little bit about what these gentlemen were doing?
Right.
Why don't you come up and use them, I'm sorry, I should... But I just want to really commend the police department, because they really stepped forward, and I know there was a lot of extra effort on their part, a lot of time was spent, and there was a lot of really serious crime prevention going on here, so Chief.
As the mayor stated, probably within the last, say, three weeks, I think we had about five residential burglaries, and one attempted burglary, generally in the Woodland Hills area, and the scary part of it, just as the mayor said, the suspects were brazen enough to go in when they knew people were home and knew people were sleeping. And in one case, actually went into bedroom where somebody was sleeping ten feet away, you know, so, very good work by the men and women of the Batavia Police Department. I don't want to say too much how we solved the crime, because we may have some copycats, but needless to say, everybody did a small part and kind of put the puzzle together, and we did make some arrests. I do think there's still more coming, although I can say to the residents out there, there's nothing to fear, we believe we, we have everybody that was responsible for it. But, anyway, a lot of good work, often, especially on a burglary like this, where there are no witnesses and virtually no physical evidence, it's a very, very difficult crime to solve, and happy to say we were successful in this thing. So, the way it works is, the people have been charged, some have bonded out, some haven't bonded out, they'll go to trial, at which point, then we can release the property to the victims, that's the next thing that comes up, when can I get my stuff back? Some, some, some property we did recover, others frankly has already been fenced, so, so we're moving ahead on that, but thank you for bringing it up, Mayor, and thank you for your appreciation.
I really commend the police department, because they did a very professional and outstanding job, and on behalf of the people of Batavia, and don't leave, because we're going to go into, roll into another one. I have been the mayor here, as all of you know, for thirty-three years, and in my thirty-three years, I have never been asked this question before, but in the last week and a half, since the publicity came out that we had burglars and we had people entering their house, and I think this comes on the back of the recent discussion that the city council entertained here a couple meetings ago, about the whole concealed carry situation. I've been contacted, either people stopped in the office, they've called on the phone, or I've met them someplace in the street. I've had six different people in Batavia in the last ten days ask me, how do I buy a gun? And so, that's, that's a real thing out there in the minds of a lot of people, and I, you know, I don't really have a quick answer for this, because there's a lot of different ways legally you can buy a gun, but we're going to, I'm going to attempt to get some at least information available here that we can give people as to the procedures you have to go through, and I believe, Chief, you have to have a FOIA card, don't you, a firearms identification card?
Right, and state police is, you know, some people are under the misunderstanding that the local police department handles it, they, we really have nothing to do with it, it's all handled by the Illinois State Police. Frankly, they're about six months behind in setting up the program, so it'll be a flood of, I think they've already been flooded with applications, so, at which point, and the way it, way it works is, the only, the only way the local police department or local city can get involved at all is theoretically, when there's an application for a concealed carry permit through the state police, they don't, they won't notify the local police agency to say, you know, Joe Blow just applied, you know, what kind of record do you have on him, or do you recommend denying, and based upon what? It's incumbent on the, the local law enforcement agency to constantly monitor the database and see, you know, do you have anybody from your town, and then kind of take, take the initiative yourself. So, it's obviously a little bit more difficult, but we'll have to stay on that, because obviously the local agencies know the history of people a lot more than the state police sitting in Springfield is going to know, you know, and I don't mean to criticize them, but it's just reality, but that's, that's how it's set up.
Now, I know some of these people have been to the window of the police department, what do you tell them when they come in and say, how do I apply to get a firearms concealed carry permit?
Well, realize a firearms owner's identification card is something they could always get, and they can still get that.
Right, but you still, you have those applications, right, at the police department?
Yes, they have, and we'll hand those out, and the state police handles that, but concealed carry application is a different issue, and that's, and that's what we'll direct them to the state police to fill the application out. I might add that, you know, I've disseminated to the offices internally, kind of frequently asked questions, not only about the concealed carry, but the medical marijuana, because it's going to fall on our shoulders as well. So, so we're prepared, and we're going to some seminars, and it's kind of a little bit of a learning curve, all the, all the police agencies in the state have to kind of get up to speed on enforcement of both these two new laws and what the implications are.
Yeah, and, and conversations I've had with my associationship with the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, I'm hearing throughout the region that the Illinois State Police seem to be overwhelmed by the number of people who are not kind of knocking on the door, wanting the application, or have filed the application, and many people, like the situation we had in Batavia last week, once they hear something, they immediately are reacting and want, want the gun now, or they want to have something right now, and as I'm understanding this process, because of the backlog of, of applications and the overwhelming number of them, that they're going to have a time, it's going to be a while, for some of these people are going to get processed in this whole situation, as I understand.
Yeah, and concealed carry will be a while, but, but people, if they just want to purchase a weapon, and they have their FOIA card, they can go to, you know, gun dealers, although there's certainly a backlog of those as well, because everybody, as you say, everybody's buying them, but that they can do right now. Concealed carry is something different.
That's what I hear, that there is a backlog in both arenas to get that stuff processed, so.
Just one thing, being a first ward, Alderman, I did get a lot of phone calls regarding the break-ins, and just, on behalf of the first ward, want to say thank you for your quick recovery and quick action.
You're very welcome.
So, I mean, I know, I started talking to some people and telling them that, you know, it's okay, things are okay, we got the bad guys, and, and then people, as you said, I saw the one email that the lady had sent to you.
It was very nice.
Very, people were very much appreciative, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Unless you have anything more you want to say, I'll let you sit down.